...the twentieth at the Episcopal Church on Ravenswood, I think at three P. M. And so I think if you have friends who don't know about this yet, please extend that invitation. Phil was such a leader in our community on every possible committee that he could be on, Planning Commission for, I know, twelve, fourteen years or more. And the CCAC Civic Center Committee, Town Center Task Force Committee, really dedicated to our town. So his passing is a real loss for us.
Second item, item fifteen on our agenda has been withdrawn. This is the issue regarding the field of the Planning Commission action with regard to Menlo School and Menlo College. So we will take any public comments during the public comments section for anyone who's here to comment on that, but we're not going to take any action on the item. So if anybody's here that doesn't want to remain because of that, they're welcome to leave. The next item on the agenda is report out for closed session.
Presentation.
Oh, there's no commentation. Oh, we'll have public comment. Is there any public comment on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, now we'll put a report out of closed session.
Mr. Mayor, council made it a closed session to look at two items. One, anticipated litigation. Council heard our report, discussed the matter, and asked staff to bring it back in July. It's a matter of which council member is qualified, so still council may be present. The second item was another existing litigation matter, or anticipated litigation matter, and council took no action, but did go some direction to staff. And we didn't get to the third.
Okay, again. I'm in second. Next item, let's see.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have the written report in front of you. Staff is here to answer any questions you might have. On our pre-meetings, there was just a couple of comments that came up here and there. One about the paragraph in there about the sort of designation of the parish house and water tower, a couple of friends of over Collin Park, what the issues there would be. And then a second, we've got with respect to response times, seeking more clarity about the specific types of priority one calls and the consideration of adding an additional data point to allow some different analysis with respect to how those response times change month to month. And then within the Police Department's report is a summary code enforcement report, but each of you does receive on a semi-regular basis a more detailed report. I haven't seen one of those in a month or so, but I'll be expecting a code enforcement officer to give me a date.
It's probably because of the change that we're...
Okay. That concludes my report.
Any questions?
I have a question. The request for zoning change on chickens, are we going to hear that?
It may, you mentioned it may, it's way up the council. Right now, it's going to be presented to the Planning Commission for their consideration as a, to take up as a change to the zoning.
Okay, moving on. No community organization roundtable report, so we're going with consent. Does anyone in the public wish to remove anyone in front of the consent panel? I hear none anybody on the council which can remove anyone from the consent council. Any comments?
Just that it was noted that there are a couple administrative changes to the May twentieth minutes with respect to a comment from one of the council members for clarity. And then a change to the end time of the study session, just to keep the record at that.
Okay. Commandant, what's your opinion?
Seven.
All seven. All in favor?
Aye.
So council is moving.
Fifty. They're all sixty, actually.
So we're actually moving down to sixteen. Are you going to put it down or not?
Fourteen.
I would send public comment.
Wasn't it, Mr. Mayor, we need to straighten this up. The consent, the agenda said we consent eight through thirteen.
Correct.
Was it the council's understanding you were voting on item fourteen as well?
Yes.
So we don't have an inconsistency.
Do I have to second vote on that, or are we okay?
No, it sounds to me like there was a consensus that everybody thought fourteen was in there, which just means it was a mistake.
I had a change that I considered a typo. Okay, so item fifteen is the item that I stated had been withdrawn from the calendar tonight, but if there's anybody here who wishes to make a public comment on item fifteen, this is the issue with Menlo School and Menlo College regarding Sunday use of car ten feet. Okay, hearing no comment, we'll move on to item sixteen. And I think that's on the...
Thank you, good evening. You did hear this item at your May twentieth meeting, and the ordinance has been recommended to the City Council for consideration from the Planning Commission. At your May twentieth meeting, you opened the public hearing, reviewed the ordinance, and made some minor modifications and directed staff to update the ordinance and bring it back to you. We have made those minor changes, including a change to the school event guidelines that limits the field usage on federal holidays to the hours of ten to five, and that's consistent with the Sunday field use limitation, and also clarified the hours on weekdays from eight A. M. to seven P. M. as recommended by the Planning Commission. So we'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions.
Okay, any questions?
I think I do have a question about section seventeen point five six zero seven oh. The permit standard, item C, no more than two special event permits shall be issued in a twelve-month period for special events on any single private resident property. Could you clarify that for me? Like if you have a home that maybe you're gonna host the educational fundraiser, a foundation fundraiser for Menlo Schools or something, and that's a special event, and then you're gonna host another fundraiser or something for Children's Health Council at your home, that classifies two special events, and then you're gonna host the In Vision for the Blind, so you can't do that?
It's where the permit is triggered. So if you were to have a special event that was smaller in nature, one day didn't spill over into, you know, the public right of way, require any police services, then that would not be considered a special event under the permit. If these larger events where a permit is required, that would be limited to the two occurrences.
So like the previous example? For the previous example?
Well, we have with like the sauce tours, you know, and the garden tours, where they were happening consecutive times throughout the year, and we'd have busloads of people coming to these tours. So we really wanted to limit, you know, how many times there's a large event that could impact the neighborhood. So that was the intent.
Because that's existing, correct?
That's, yeah, there's no change to that section. I think some of the events you're referring to are smaller in nature and would not trigger the permit requirement.
But if I understand that the three special permits for one private address would be barred by disordinance, and that continues from what currently exists.
Correct, there's no change from the current.
Okay, are there any public comments on this item sixteen? Or is it a sixteen? No comments? There are comments from the council?
No, thank you for making the changes. I thought that they were, they were well done with regards to making sure that there's been planning sample on the lights that may, whether there had been an agreement that the, that that was received. And also point out that I think the seven, seven o'clock cutoff on the school events, I think that was in the history of the sport.
That's correct.
And so it wasn't changed, recommendation is to keep it where it is.
Keep it as existing, right?
Okay.
Let's move that we approve the special events appointments as amended.
All seven. All in favor?
Aye.
That's an introduction for first reading, it'll show up on the next agenda for second reading and adoption.
Great, thank you. Okay, we are at item seventeen, which is committee and commission appointments.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. This evening, the council is considering appointments to the Audit Finance Committee, Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, Environmental Programs Committee, Park and Recreation Committee, and the Planning Commission. Staff has recommended automatic appointments to the committees that have the same number of applicants as the del vacancies. These committees include Audit Finance Committee, Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and the Park and Recreation Committee. For the committees that have more applicants than vacancies, official ballots will be provided to the council for voting purposes. Each council member will be asked to choose the appropriate number of applicants by mark and check next to the applicant. Candidates are used to be voted, they are being selected for appointment to the committee. And just for a point of clarification, my report notes that all applicants to the Environmental Programs Committee are new applicants. That's a typo. One applicant, Denise Coverman, is seeking reappointment to the committee and therefore is not a new candidate. Additionally, it should be noted that both Valerie Gardner has previously served on the EPC and John Davy previously served on the Park and Recreation Committee. However, both applicants serve the minimum two-year hiatus required by the resolution governing committees. That concludes my report.
Okay, do we need a motion to accept the staff recommendation on the committees?
I have a question.
Sure. Related to the bike pedestrian, there is an applicant that is a resident city resident. John Lehman. Is it hard for policy to put in people from major cities to be in the jurisdiction of the county council? So...
The Bike Pedestrian Committee is actually supposed to be a broader committee in terms of the T. A. standards for that committee.
It's not one of our usual standing committees, so...
We created the Bike Pedestrian Committee with that exception.
Okay. Did you have...
Yeah, I have a question. You know, on the EPC, we had, actually, one time we had twelve numbers, and then we were having problems making a forum. In fact, it, it had the two of them was there, and then we ended up having to reduce the number, but we said that we'd stand the number as well if we needed to, if there was interest in that. There may be interest in being more inclusive, but having a minimum for a forum, I don't know if we could, we could do that. But the number of people that usually be on that, or the number seats that were on that committee to start with is twelve. And we only reduced it so that we would be able to have meetings, because people were having problems arranging their calendars and things like that. So as opposed to being, having this committee be exclusive, if we can be more inclusive, is that possible? If we could do that, if it pleases everyone else.
Well, it's not on the agenda to change the composition of the EPC. We can't do that. Can't change the rule with respect to what constitutes quorum. We can certainly look at creative ways and make it easier to reduce them. But normally, because we have rules and procedures, we'll, can we all say that it requires a percentage, fifty percent of the appointed membership, it makes it difficult to change that.
Means EPC, there was a minimum, you're asking if we could point more than the five?
Yeah.
Yeah, the EPC is a minimum of five members.
Minimum of six members, including one captain.
Right, so you're going to point more.
Yes.
Yes, that's what I was saying, is why be exclusive? Because people have busy agendas, and we had some problems getting people to those meetings. And so the more, the better, and you're gonna get a better consensus out of that.
As long as you understand, if you, the more you appoint, the number of the forum goes up correspondingly.
Has that committee been obtaining a forum that it's...
At the lowest level, I think the, in the years past, last year...
We've had some challenges with the...
Yeah, there've been a couple times where we had a couple people that couldn't show up on time.
And that didn't ever come.
Yeah, and so...
I think I can comment.
No, it's, George picked up on it, it was the minimum.
The minimum, yeah. So I guess the, what would be the maximum?
So what's the number?
What would be the maximum?
That's per view of the council. I mean, you could point twenty if you wanted to.
But then we'd have to have... Then we would have to have ten.
For eleven for four. And the larger that forum gets, the harder it is to get that many in a room to meet.
Well, they can always have interested participants in the public comment.
Always, no matter what the quorum.
Did you have something additional, please?
I was just concerned about twenty.
So we have, we have six applicants for three positions at the minimum, which means that we have two other members of the committee. Is that right?
No. Well, there, there are still two other members, right, and the council.
So if, I mean, what you're suggesting is that we point everybody...
Well, that's one of my...
The original idea was is that it would be eight to...
Plus the council liaison.
Yeah, but the council liaison number count, so you'd have to have five of the eight.
Yes.
What's the number for rail, out of curiosity? Ten?
Rail's a big one.
I know, like, on appointments.
So for, for the committees that have same number of applicants as vacancies, you can point them all in one motion.
Okay. So I have a question. If there is someone from the floor who would like to apply for one of the committees that have the exact same amount, like, say, for Park and Rec, is there, is that an opportunity of those points?
We have three applicants and three vacancies.
And so that, that might, that, that deadline's done?
Just a clarification, related to Denise Coverman's, that was her dinner, she's already in the committee or she has produced?
Her EPC.
She's on.
She's on.
She's one of the...
She's been a company of...
Are we doing the numbers over again?
Her term is, uh...
She's...
Okay, so I still leave those two, so there's still others.
Right, yeah.
Frank, Frank Merrill and, um, Tom, who is...
Swati Adani? Swati Adani?
She's... She's not on.
She's on.
So who's Mary?
Frank Merrill was on it, I think he's off now.
No, Frank's on, but...
Frank expired in two thousand seventeen.
Yeah.
Swati has expired.
So I think the decision is, how many are we gonna expand it to? Is that really a question?
Environmental programs can have eight.
Because that may have the flexibility to grow.
Yes. Well, any comments?
I'm not sure about that, but again, I, um, I think an eight member, it'll, it'll be difficult to get five people there as a group. Do you agree with that?
I agree with that. I mean, if we were gonna extend it to seven...
Seven, like an odd number.
That's gonna be four people that have to be there.
And I think four is good for a quorum and for getting things done, you know?
So adding, adding an additional one to our appointment stack, instead of three, we'll have four, correct? Uh, number two, if we're gonna make it a seven-person committee, we'd add five.
Add five to that, right.
Mr. Mayor is not spelled out very well, but the appointing authority, I mean, he talks about the initial appointment being for four years and staggered. The problem is, if you increase the number of appointments, being all under what it is right now, they won't be staggered anymore, they'll be offset by six appointees this year and two, and they'll be off years.
So could we, out of curiosity, appoint the number of, that we're doing this evening, the three positions, and then do two additional or whatever we choose as a two-year appointment? the three positions and then do two additional or whatever we choose as a two-year appointment?
It's a way she's leading down. I mean, it's not spelled out, you know, Teresa kind of sort of.
I think that would be a, in my opinion, reasonable way to get more people on it, but yet still keep it in stack so that we don't have everybody vacating in four years. So appoint the ones we know about this evening with three and then say, we're going to add two additional, but the two additional appointment will be only for a two-year term versus a four-year term.
Yeah, that still counts a forum though.
Right, that still counts.
So we'll need five.
Yeah.
So we have open this up.
Absolutely. Um, okay, so, uh, I want to open it up for public comment and I want to give any of the candidates an opportunity to speak and to inform the council, uh, your thoughts about the committee that you've applied for and why you would be good for the committee.
Are you speaking of just the, the committee you're talking about now?
Yeah, I think we need to go through it committee by committee so that there's some organized form here.
Well, why don't we prove the ones that are.
Well, I want to give an opportunity for anybody, even if they've a- applied for appointment to the ones that where there aren't, you know, an excess number of appointees. Is there, is it, is there anybody that would like to speak to the council who has put in their name for appointment to the Audit Finance Committee, the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, or the Park and Rec Committee? Okay, um, does that make sense? If we're, if there's any, oh, I'm sorry, is somebody?
Yeah.
Uh, just to say I'm present, John Billy, lives on Atherton Avenue, all the streets of Atherton for twenty-five years.
And you're applying for the bike ed?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for applying. Okay, so I think.
No, John Daisy is here for Park and Rec.
You're going to take those three?
Yeah, I think I'll take the, I'll take a motion on those three to accept the staff. So, Luke?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so thank you everyone who has applied for Park and Rec, Audit Finance, and Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Each of you have been appointed to those committees. Really, we appreciate your, uh, being willing to work with us and, and serve the town.
Stop by, people.
So, yeah, make sure you get your, uh, social security number and.
So, okay, so we have two committees left, the Environmental Programs Committee and the Planning Commission. Um, why don't we take the one at the time and the first one I'll take is the Environmental Programs.
Good evening, council. Uh, my name is Denise Kuperman. I live at seventy-four Atherton Avenue. And I, uh, served on the Environmental Programs Committee for a two-year term. And, uh, really en- enjoyed the work with the group and feel that, um, there are many opportunities, uh, for this town to embrace more sustainable, um, measures as regards to perhaps development, uh, things that we can do in the park and more importantly, educating, uh, members of our community on important matters as, as relates to construction, uh, landscape, and other matters. I have, uh, a background in environmental planning and landscape architecture. I'm a certified sustainable landscape designer and I am very well versed in the Uniform Building Code and lead practices and think that, uh, my professional experience and my education and my interest, um, would allow me to serve the committee well. And it's something that I've been involved with, uh, for a very long time and, uh, would hope that you might extend, uh, the committee. The committee is really interested in doing more outreach to the community at large. We successfully had a water, uh, conservation, uh, program in, uh, April as part of the birthday. But with a small committee of five, it's very difficult to set up subcommittees that could take on things that would allow us to maybe set up more opportunities for outreach to the community at large. And my hope is that people that have applied for this position would make themselves available to the meeting, um, requirements which are not significant. It's once every two months. So, um, uh, anyways, I welcome you and, and hope that I might be appointment, appointed. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
It feels strange just addressing you, not everyone. Um, hi, I'm Holly Joseph. I live at fifty-nine Juniper Drive in Lyndwood. I had worked with, um, Atherton twenty-ten a while back and one of the things I really enjoyed was the opportunity to do more for the EPC. It was a little, a little bit for me. I'd worked with ACTERA before. I don't know if you're aware of ACTERA. They work with the community in training as far as variety of environmental programs. My background is not environmental. It is, um, in human resources, so it's very different. But I like to bring people together and solve problems together. Now, what I'd like to do with the EPC is to discover what the real problems are by doing quieter, um, surveys and figuring out what's going on, what people would like to do, what they would like to work on. So get up better community involvement. Then I'd like to do some, um, development and then, and then roll out the plan after that where we could have everyone, maybe if they even have like an hour or a day to work on something, I think it could do, do more than just like a power of five people. I think it would be great to involve the community in a larger sense. So that's why I'd like to be on the EPC. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Valerie Gardner. Um, I'd like to, um, recommend that you consider keeping the size of this committee to a smaller size because in the last four years, I believe this committee has met three times and has had not a lot of success in getting a quorum so they could get anything done. Um, I served previously on the committee from two thousand and six until about two thousand and eleven and at that time we had a very small committee and we got a lot done. Um, part of what makes this committee, or what made the committee very powerful, was the ability to bring in members of the community who are interested in being a part of it and want to help out on projects as part of a subcommittee of citizens. And we were able to do that very effectively, um, because the EPC stayed small and there wasn't a lot of time from members on that. We brought in a lot of community members and Holly, um, began to participate as far back as two thousand and eight or nine. And Janet was part of the, the work of the projects and we worked very effectively to roll out, um, I have a list of about ten major projects that we did. Um, we had a full-blown, fully fleshed-out website called Atherton Green that people used, had something in the neighborhood of five thousand hits by the time, um, it was closed down. Um, we had an email list. We had our first ever Earth Day celebration that had a full week of events that surrounded it, including, um, Tesla demo drives and an eco fashion show. We had, um, a major solar panel purchase group buy, um, program. We had, um, a community climate conversation that was in conjunction with Yale School of Environment and Forestry, I think it was called at the time, that Rick spoke at for the first time in the town, I think, at that panel. Um, we did a Green Start program that involved some, nearly a hundred kids from ten Atherton schools in a green competition to do green projects and that was, there was community voting at a fair that allowed the community to pick the, the project they liked best. And there was all sorts of things, like an art show and an art talent thing, what, that went on at the same time. Um, we did a live Live Green Expo and a Green Start Challenge the following year and handed out ten thousand, um, questionnaire forms to students that they competed at filling out from eighteen area schools and it was a major success with a big expo. And then we started working on the Atherton twenty-twenty program, which was first called Atherton twenty-ten until we realized we wanted to make it a ten-year program. And we did this with subcommittee members, not with, it wasn't just the small tact, sort of the tactical team of the, of the committee. We brought in a lot of community members and that was very effective. And I think if you make this committee too big, it will stop being effective and have three meetings again like it has in the last four years. Thank you.
I'm Janet Larson and I worked with Valerie and Holly on the twenty-twenty, so I won't go over what, all we did. But I have been, um, with a garden club and it's not just people poking posies. It is, um, I've been environmental chair for two years. Um, I was very with, I got our whole garden club and plus all the communities. I went to all the city council meetings and got everybody to vote against the Cargill project and building on the salt ponds. And I'm very, have been very involved in the environment, so, um, I would love working with Valerie and Holly again and as we did all these wonderful things that were just starting to go and then we were sort of closed down. Thank you.
Anybody, any other public comment? Anybody else want to address the council? For the Environmental Programs Committee? Okay, uh. Right, so let's, let's talk about what we want to do to decide as we.
Oh, I, I think, you know, my, my initial thought, um, was, um, it's, we really love to have, so many people want to work on this very important issue. Um, I started, uh, working on the Environmental Programs Committee in two thousand eight, two thousand nine and it was just really beginning. It was just really forming. And so many of the things that, uh, jargon, the, the lexicon was, hadn't even been invented yet. It seems like eons ago and now here we are in twenty-fifteen and so much of this sustainability and environmental and Z and E and everything, it just, it's almost part, it's, it's just like second nature to us now. So I'm very excited that so many people want to, uh, be on this committee. So my initial, uh, thought was, you know, bring one, bring all, we all, uh, as many as, uh, possible, uh, to serve. But then reflecting back, uh, Valerie just reminded me that we did have a pretty small committee and at that time there were two council members involved and they were very active, uh, on the committees. It's unlike what we're doing now with our resident committees where the residents are in charge and, uh, the council is just a liaison, uh, member of the committee and is not a, a voting member, uh, but brings information back to council, uh, from the committees. And we did a lot with the outreach, um, in the subcommittee, uh, format, but the real work got, uh, started and launched from a small group. So, uh, I'm kind of, I'd like to hear from my other fellow council members about it, but I'm leaning towards keeping it small and just, uh, going forward and electing the three positions today and to get the committee back up and running again, uh, that way. And then we can, uh, take a look at, uh, maybe expanding that sometime. So I, but, um, I'd love to hear from my fellow council members about their opinions about it.
Just in, in terms of, uh, what constitutes a forum, first is that, second question, there's no difference between a five-person committee and a seven-person committee? Right, there is. There is. Three to four, it doesn't matter. So two percent plus one?
Yeah.
Has to be a simple majority of the commission general.
So there's no difference between six and seven? Right, there's a difference between one, five, six. Yes. You need four for six and you need four for seven. Right. You need three for five.
Well, I, I think that, uh, I'd like to see the organization a little bit bigger. Um, I just feel that, uh, we have a lot of very qualified candidates and, um, I, you know, I don't want to see, uh, meetings that aren't made. Uh, I think that, that would make the organization essentially useless and wouldn't get anything done, so. Um, and that's actually frustrating to everybody, not only us on the council because we, um, it's mainly the new things and the committee themselves, but, um, it is very, very, uh, I think it's important to also be as inclusive as possible, um, and, and I wouldn't mind seeing any additional to be on it.
So just, uh, uh, um, tagging on to that, when we think, if the, um, committee is, uh, as a committee is kept relatively small, um, there's no reason why the other members, um, if they're not elected to the committee, couldn't volunteer in the subcommittee format or attend to the committees because there were lots of teams, um, that I recall, we had lots of members of the, uh, community who would come and be at the, uh, EPC meetings, um, when it was, um, the camp, council liaison, you know, in the early days before it was shut down in twenty-one. So, uh, as far as that goes, I think that it kind of kills two birds with one stone. It keeps the quorum, uh, number small, uh, so you know you can at least get, you know, three people there to, you know, kind of continue to move things along, uh, you know, quorum-wise and have meetings rather than, you know. Make the parliament.
I, I, I've got difficulty with, I, I mean, I want, and like all the committees, I want the, the committees to be able to feel like that they accomplished something and, um, I almost like having five council members and I know how difficult it is, although we do attend everything, um, getting us all together on the same page as well. And it can be difficult. And I think that the more you have, the more you're ringing, trying to rein in to make things happen because I think that everybody wants to see results in the committee. Um, and feeling like a larger group, sometimes the attendance level, sometimes somebody misses it, that person's not involved in a certain thing, but then they'll attend the next one and then somebody else will miss. And I think it's because you think you have a larger group that, you know, you may have, thinking you have more degree of flexibility in attendance level as well, maybe that does concern me as well. Um, I also want to make sure that the charter that we have is clearly, you know, a direction where the Environmental Committee can be able to accomplish something and knowing that they're pushing our direction as well, saying here, here's what your charter is and we're all on the same page because we want you to accomplish more goals that make our side here easier. So, I, I, the expansion does raise my concerns because I think that there might be less accomplishments and I think accomplishments by rewards being, I would hope that all the people that are, are interested in the environmental issue stay involved and even if they didn't get, you know, the subcommittee factor of it doesn't mean that you can't still participate and still accomplish the same goals, but yet not being that voting member, but still that voting member on the committee members, so. I think I probably going to stick, uh, but I, I'm very pleased that we have as many applicants for this position. I mean, it's, it's one of those game, you give you the game, if you don't, I'm pleased that we have so many applicants for this position. And I want them all to be involved. I think, I think, I could just say everybody should be involved, but I think that in a goal of trying to accomplish more things, there might be a more of an complement and less members.
Yes, and first, I think you guys heard from everybody, but thank you very much for, for putting time and effort and being willing to put time and effort into supporting that and just as important. Um, and as I think about it, we do want this committee to be effective and I understand that it's a little alternative from what we're there. Um, and I'd love to try to figure out a way to slice the baby a little bit differently to make, you know, assuming hit both those goals and stuff to do. One thought I have is perhaps we keep it at this level now and we note for the record that when two years comes by, if in fact we had people participating, that we increase the size at that time. So we have sort of a tracker to look, to look to, to say, yeah, people have been showing up and having participated because, um, that go with, with what Carrie just said, which is to say, I don't know if there's a two-fuse extension between a committee member and someone who's not a committee member, member and therefore feels like they shouldn't attend meetings or as a partner that are as important as that. So, uh, anyway, that'd be my thought. Why don't we keep it at the size that we have now, track it and make it actual notes now come back to us and we track it in two years, uh, you know, people have been coming and it's been there. This quorum issue's resolved, let's pump it up at that time.
Okay, um, well, I'll, I'll weigh in my thoughts. Uh, I mean, you know, I, we all want as many people to participate in the governance issues regarding our town as we possibly can. It only makes the town stronger. Uh, and my inclination is also to expand it to seven uh, because I want to be, we, we have six candidates that want to participate and, uh, I want that, that, you know, I want to make room for people. I really want to embrace the people that want to participate. At the same time, I agree that being effective is more important than just being willing to participate. Uh, so I guess I'm convinced we should stick with the current format. Uh, I'm not sure we need to wait two years. I think that if, uh, if the committee's getting good attendance and, uh, and we can expand the size of the committee, we can expand and appoint a couple people to your terms so we stay our terms. Uh, I, I, I definitely want to make it, uh, I think we're, we're tied between a rock and a hard place here and we, we want to expand it, but we don't want to make it ineffective. So it seems like that's the right decision. Uh, okay, I have a question in terms, so you're going to provide ballots?
Correct.
Okay, and, and we will vote and if anyone gets three votes, then they will be appointed to the committee. And if we don't have three people that get three votes, then do we take a revote of those that weren't elected?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, we'll re, yeah, anybody that doesn't have any votes will.
Goes away?
Yeah.
Goes away. Anyone that doesn't have any votes goes away. Okay, are we going to do this, do the vote committee by committee?
Yeah, we'll start with the environmental.
Okay, let's start. So you're voting for three?
Yes, three checks. And it's not ranked votes, so just a check is fine. And don't forget your signature, please.
This is the hardest part. It's really hard.
We want to encourage everyone to participate and we don't have more slots than people. It's less, but still.
But the Environmental Programs Committee, it can be really all-inclusive for everybody. Every resident has a chance to participate at some level and, um, it can be really good.
Okay, so the, we have three highest voted, Valerie Gardner has four, Janet Larson and Jacinta Rappas have each three votes.
So, so then these are all appointed?
Those are appointed.
Okay. Okay. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you for applying. Uh, and, uh, we look forward to working with all of you and, uh, we look forward to the, what, what this committee's going to do going forward. I didn't say during the discussion, but I want to say that I did go to the Earth Day, uh, event this year that was focused on water and it was a really good event.
That's right.
It, 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 I mean, it came at exactly the right time before the cow water events occurred and, uh, it set the stage for some issues, I think, that we have with cow water and hopefully they're moving. And, uh, I thought it was an excellent event. So I look forward to more of the events. Okay, the next item is we'll take up the Planning Commission. So are there any, uh, members of the public uh, who would like to make public comment with respect to your application for the Planning Commission? Please. What is, what number is this? This is number seventeen. Seventeen? Yep, committee and commission appointments. Oh. And, and we're taking, so we've got five committees, two of which we have more candidates than positions. We voted to accept the applications from all candidates for those committees where there's the same number of applicants as there are openings. And so they have all been appointed and we just did the EPC and we're going to do planning now.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to my comments. Um, I'm Nancy Lerner. I live on Austin Avenue, have lived there for twenty-eight years. And, uh, I'm sure you've studied the applications. Mine has all the statistics on it about me. There were two points that the, she just was too short to add anything about, so I'd like to mention those. First of all, I do have some experience with planning commissions from the other side of the table as a homeowner and a small business owner in San Mateo, Foster City, San Carlos, and here in Atherton where we did two remodeling projects on our present home. Um, I'm a California licensed veterinarian. I'm a past president of the Peninsula Veterinary Medical Association and currently its newsletter editor. So I'm, I do creative writing and proofreading and copy editing and all that kind of stuff. Um, thirdly, and perhaps most importantly, I sit on a committee at Stanford which is very parallel to, uh, the Planning Commission here. I was appointed to that sixteen years ago. I'm still there, uh, by the dean of research uh, in the Department of Comparative Medicine at Stanford. And this panel is important and significant because every medical, uh, uh, research protocol or proposal has to be approved by our committee. So this, as you can guess, is a worldwide effect. Stanford is known for its wonderful medical research and everybody benefits for it. So, uh, I'm proud to be on part of that committee and I've had a hundred percent attendance. If you're worried about getting a, a quorum, I will be here if I'm on the Planning Commission. Uh, also, I certainly believe, I'm sure you do too, that anyone applying for a position of responsibility should do their homework and research the, the whole circumstances completely. And with that in mind, I came to the May meeting of the Planning Commission a few weeks ago and was astonished to find out I was the only applicant there and I know there's eight of us. So I hope that shows my sincerity. I've also attended the Civic Center, uh, public meetings. Uh, June fourth, I went to one. Uh, that's probably all I have to say that isn't already on the, uh, uh, application. But I appreciate your consideration of my application and I look forward to your favorable decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, I'm Lori Burey and I live at three, four, five Stockbridge Avenue. I've been there for thirty-plus years and I've also been a real estate broker for thirty-plus years in the area. Um, there, these are exciting times for Atherton and I, I was on the softball commission way back when I was little kids and I loved being involved and it's just, would be so exciting to be on a committee. And with my, um, expertise as a Realtor and also living and being remodeled four times and, anyway, I think I could bring a lot to the table with the young, the young demographics that are coming into the area. It's, it's just going to be fun and with the new town, Civic Center and library, there's a lot to do. So I hope you consider me. Thank you.
Mayor and council? Nice to be back. Randy Lamb, Randy, anyone I haven't met, Lisa, nice to see you too. Uh, we've been residents in, in, uh, Atherton since nineteen ninety-five. We live at one thirty-eight Almond Row. Our primary business is real estate. We do investing, we do development. Um, I won't reiterate all the things on, that I put on my application, but we've done eight or nine million feet of industrial entitlement work, uh, dealt with every possible government agency, whether it's. Dealt with every possible government agency, whether it's state, federal, local, um, just about every, every, every agency you can think of. Uh, we've actually, we're actually an active developer. We generally build office and industrial product. We've got two big projects going right now. One, we just broke ground on in Mountain View, one that is about to go through the entitlement process in Los Gatos. Uh, we've built nine homes in Atherton, so we, we do understand exactly what goes on in terms of, of the building process and floor ratios and everything else. Um, I've been on the general plan committee here at the town, on the audit committee. Not exactly sure. There's another committee that, that's maybe finance way back when. But, but, um, I would congratulate you on seeing so many people here applying for committees and commissions 'cause I can remember those days long, long ago when, if you got several people interested, it was generally the same folks over and over and over. So, uh, overall, I'd say I really look forward to this, and if it's something you feel I'm right for, I'd love to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay, what?
I'm being encouraged to do this, against my better judgment. Um, I'm Chris Clant. I live at forty Irving in Lindenwood. And I seem to be a voice of Lindenwood these days. Uh, I've been there since nineteen seventy-six. So I have been, I'm, uh, an active member of this community for a long time. Uh, I feel very passionate about the way Atherton is, the direction it's moving. I feel, uh, very happy to hear all of the Civic Center things that are going on. And I think the, the whole process of being involved in a planning commission would be very interesting to me. I also have been a Realtor, so I've had those experiences, but I'm more the human person, uh, than the Realtor person. That, I have retired. So anyway, I am hoping that you'll consider my application. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Denise Coverman, seventy-four Atherton Avenue. Uh, I've been interested in joining the planning commission for a number of times and hope that you'll, uh, seriously consider my application this time. And that I hope that in appointing members of the committee, that you, um, look at the mix of residents that are applying to the committee. Uh, there are individuals that have, um, experience with development and real estate, which is perhaps good. And that perhaps that also having a mix of residents who have an interest in, um, the character of the town to some extent. Not that things remain static, 'cause things never do. But that the composition of the committee be balanced. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else, uh, here that would, um, speak? Oh, okay.
Who was this, Fatu?
Uh, this is for Fatu.
So, um, can I ask a question specifically? Um, there are only two openings at this time for this year. Are there openings coming up for next year?
In two thousand sixteen, there's two openings.
Are the, uh, members turned down, or would, would they be able to reapply?
Eric Lane and Mary Woodler. I think they both have the ability to reapply.
Right, because, um, there's, it's a four-year term, and then, and then you can reapply. But you, if you reapply, would you just put in the mix of everyone else at that point?
Correct.
It's not an automatic?
Correct.
Okay. Also, is it signed with?
No.
This is really hard. There's only two. This is really hard.
So one, one person got four votes, Randy Lamb. The other person got, that got two votes was Joanne Byrne-Sutherland. And anybody else only had one vote.
So all the ones and the two come back?
Does, all the ones and the two?
So everybody got at least one vote? Is that correct?
No, not everybody. So, I'm sorry. So who would be taken off the list was zero votes, is Michael Greenberg and Kristen Klein.
Okay, so...
So cross off Kristen Klein, Michael Greenberg, and you can cross off Randy Lamb, 'cause he's off my group company.
Pinky nail, what, one?
One.
One.
It's like your library.
Okay, so we have three people with one vote and one person with two votes. So you wanna do that all over again? So the one person that, that's zero, that will take off the list is Denise Coverman. You all need to cross off.
It's round three, right?
Yes. Just got, I'm sure that's already marked, right?
Yeah, because, uh...
Right.
Sloppy voters.
Hang on, I've got a chat. You're gonna get disqualified.
So three votes goes to Joanne Byrne-Sutherland. Randy Lamb and Randy Byrne.
Okay, thank you, everybody who applied. Uh, thank you for your commitment to the town. Uh, we look forward to working with you. So thank you very much. And for those who didn't get appointed, we hope that you combine, uh, I mean, and some of it's on us to find a way to help you to work with us. But we are committed to doing that. We really appreciate your application.
And consider next year.
Yeah, and consider next year and in the interim, in the event that there are openings, which are bound to be. Uh, okay, we are now moving on to item eighteen.
Need the mayor to appoint a council member to the bike thing committee.
Uh, can we do that now? No, I, I didn't read it.
You got one?
Uh, I am a clean bill voter in the bike thing.
Well, you've been on it. I mean, that's why nobody else responded. I have no doubt about that.
Okay, so, uh, we are now at item eighteen. Uh, adoption of a resolution assessing special parcel tax for municipal services.
Good evening, council. I'm the public. Um, right before you, as a recommendation to adopt the resolution assessing a special parcel tax for municipal services for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, sixteen. Revenue for the parcel tax totals one point eight six million. Ordinance number five eighty-one of the town authorized the city council to assess a special parcel tax levy on all properties within the town of Atherton. Authorized uses for the parcel tax include police emergency response services, the neighborhood patrols, street repair maintenance, and drainage facility repair maintenance. At its June third, two thousand fifteen study session, the council discussed the proposed rate for the fiscal year two thousand fifteen, sixteen. Council concluded that a hundred percent of special parcel tax should be collected in fifteen, sixteen to ensure sufficient funding for program, program capital projects and police services. The fiscal year fifteen, sixteen budget includes special parcel tax revenue of one point eight, one million eight hundred sixty thousand. The council determined that the revenues for the parcel tax be directed twenty percent towards public safety operational costs and the remaining eighty percent to drainage and street capital projects. Based on the allocation, it's three hundred and seventy-two thousand will be for public safety services and one million four hundred and eighty-eight thousand for capital project expenditures. Um, if the council approves the parcel tax levy as proposed in the tax resolution, one million eight, eight hundred and sixty thousand will be generated. And, uh, the county of Salome will collect the special parcel tax for the town, just as the regular property tax bills in December and April. That is the conclusion of my staff report.
Question, clarification?
Yeah, just recommendation to adopt the resolution.
Sorry. Uh, question, clarification? Is there any comment for the public?
Yes.
Please.
Uh, my name is John Buckeye, thirty-four, Salvi Line High. Um, I think you all know I was part of an opposition group a few years ago when the parcel tax passed. We had, um, former mayor Kathy, I, I was hoping she'd be here tonight. Uh, we had a member of the finance committee who said the finance committee said the parcel tax was not necessary based on the financial projections. Uh, what was said, you know, we weren't allowed to do an opposition based on some confusion over how the ballot was generated. But what was said at the time was, hey, if it turns out that the finance committee is right and there's an abundance of revenues, then we won't assess it. And I understand there's a multimillion dollar surplus right now. So I guess my question is, what would it take to not assess the parcel tax? Would there have to be a ten million dollar surplus or a twenty million dollar surplus? Or would there have to be a situation in which no one could think of anything to spend money on, which I could tell you is never going to happen? You know, what's interesting to me is that Atherton is probably the most conservative community in the Bay Area. And I know that most of you have a conservative background, and the conservative way of, um, handling tax issues is to say, avoid it whenever you possibly can. I guess it becomes much more personal when people get involved in government, and, uh, that's true in Washington, too. People get to Washington and, uh, you know, they all of a sudden, uh, think, uh, it's, it's a good time to spend a lot of money. Maybe that's why we have multi-trillion dollar deficits. But I, I just think it's irresponsible not to rebate at least some of this. It certainly goes against the spirit of what was said. It goes against the spirit of what's in the ordinance. And, um, I, I mean, I was having an email exchange with Bill Connors. Five hundred thousand dollars is going to repair a civic center that hasn't even been built yet. I, I just, I don't get this.
Is there any other public comment?
Last but not the come before this council this evening, Denise Coverman, seventy-four Atherton Avenue. I, uh, would just like to express my hope that, uh, some of the infrastructure projects that are needed, in particular, uh, some of the pedestrian and bike path, um, improvements that are sorely needed for those of us who walk and, and bike, might be addressed with some of the parcel tax money over the next year and hopefully years to come. Um, we have many deferred projects, and I hope that you would, um, and I think that you will choose those projects wisely and see them executed well. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is there any other public comment? Okay, I'll bring back the council. Comments?
Um, I know I brought this up before. Um, so... I'm against assessing the full extent of the parcel tax. I think that, uh, first off, um, we did have some bluebirds last year. Uh, the five hundred thousand dollars that got released from the, five hundred, five thousand dollars got released to the building fund. And, um, I can understand having a sinking fund to replace buildings, the same as we have an equipment replacement fund. But at a twenty million dollar building that we would be replacing over a fifty-year life, which is the average depreciable life over a building, it would be about four hundred thousand dollars a year, and that's assuming it would have a zero residual value, which I think is also a foolish claim. So I think that the five hundred thousand dollars, uh, it might be a good starter, but, uh, it might not, it may or may not be, you know, uh, some of it could have been a, to defray parcel tax. Also, the council voted to take out of reserve two point three million dollars plus some change, also to put towards the capital projects. Um, and so, and on top of that, there was the three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars of extra sales tax. So when you add all those things together, then almost double what we get out of the parcel tax. And I think that really, some consideration, if we want to continue to ask the public to approve the parcel tax, that some consideration should be given to either having a hiatus of a certain percentage. And I'm not present, you know, representing and, and suggesting that we go a hundred percent. And in fact, in the study session, I suggested just a twenty percent, which was less than what the staff had recommended in their analysis. So I think a very conservative approach would be seen by people. I noticed when my gas goes up, you know, a couple pennies a gallon. So, you know, when, when there was a comment made by members of the council that said that people wouldn't recognize four or five hundred dollars being taken out of their tax, I, I don't believe that's the case. I would recognize it, and I think most people in town would recognize it. So I do think it's irresponsible, and we're not good stewards, if we just continue to just add and add and add when we have adequate reserves. And at the same time, talking about raising more and more revenue. So I do think that, uh, you know, I have no issue with, with the, with the, uh, the split that we've, we've made. With the twenty percent going to, uh, to support the extra positions that we've brought on board, I, and the rest going into the capital. But I do think that if we were to cut back, that we should cut back at the CIP, especially in light of the fact that we had the bluebird, that, that we also moved some additional money around, and we took two point three million dollars and put it in for capital, future capital programs, in addition to the other two million dollars that we have to spend this year. That's over four million dollars to spend on capital projects this year. And I think it's irresponsible for us not to consider this. Thank you for listening again.
Shall we pause? Normal silence, please. Um... I'm just gonna say that, uh, I'm not one of those people who likes to be taxeefed. So if you're gonna tax me, I want you to accomplish something with the monies that you do receive from me. And I think that we have had, and we still have so many major capital improvement projects, we keep pushing off and paying in tomorrow. We're dealing with one of the issues that we're having to face today is that we've never set any funds aside for the existing buildings and structures that we have. So the concept of saving money and sending money aside... So the concept of saving money and setting money aside for future building repairs, maintenance, or replacement, and thinking that it's irresponsible, I just question that statement on its whole. The fact of the matter is, is that we are looking into additional revenue sources and special assessment districts and so on and so forth. We are and we have, and we've clearly taken these things on as serious issues. Taxation is a serious issue. Proper taxation for the right individuals is something that we're looking at very closely. So we're not taking this lightly. And then to say that, you know, one, we don't need the funds because we have a surplus of funds. I question that statement on its whole. We have a surplus of funds right now to pay for capital improvement projects that we're in the hole on. So when we're running a negative, how can we say we're running a positive because we have a positive approach today? We have a negative because we continue to push these projects aside that keep getting more expensive and more expensive. I'm just not in favor at this point to set, to take any additional funds away from accomplishing something in projects that we currently have been setting aside. It just, and again, I got to reenter. I don't like to be taxed either. And sure, if I got a twenty percent back, I probably would notice that myself personally. But the reality is, to give somebody twenty percent today and then charge them forty percent tomorrow because we now need it, because by the way, a capital improvement project is now on our docket, doesn't make sense to me. And I'm sure it wouldn't make sense to the average person that's gonna have to pay for it tomorrow. Because we personally aren't paying for it, the people within Atherton are gonna pay for those projects that we then have to accomplish. So why not try to chip away a little bit at a time of the projects that we do have? And yes, the number does sound big, you know, that we do have four million dollars that were allocated to capital projects. But we have thirty million accomplished into our drainage, our channel alone. So are we running a positive? I mean, I do the math. There's still a negative there. So, you know, again, I still am in favor of keeping it in the direction that we are, as long as we're committed to getting projects done and approving, you know, projects that residents and athletes even see that were accomplished. Right? Yeah, a couple things. One, I gather, philosophically, it'd be nice not to tax at all. I do think we need to recognize there's been a tendency to defer spending on issues that we've done for quite some time. And that you can only do that for so long before you've really gotta pay the piper. And I think we reached the point where we need to pay the piper. I'll be real clear, though, that I don't see this as a strategic step towards getting another tax approved in a few years or something like that. That's not all what I'm talking about. And so to the extent that that comes up, that's not before the council now, it's not a good idea. It's not, I think, we should pay a lot of look at. And to me, it's as simple as we have, we have tremendous needs right now that have come up because there's been a lack of spending on a consistent basis, which is what I think a well-run city needs to do, is spend consistently on infrastructure projects so you don't get caught. I will note, as I've noted before, I personally would make a different decision about spending money to replace a building that hasn't been built yet. So I take that up there, and I think that's something we should look at. But the larger issue here is, is I think we have the dirty needs of money, real needs of money. I think the proper prudent thing to do is to move, as we have, the list from those tiers and collect the taxes and spend them crudely.
So the five hundred thousand building reserve fund, that's unrestricted, correct?
Correct, technically general fund.
It's technically general fund. It's kind of like a, you know, it's more of a philosophical thing, okay? So, I mean, if we, it's there, it's like, we're trying to put something in place so that we can kind of get used to putting that little nickel in that piggy bank, you know, for that rainy day in the future and protecting the asset. And it's nothing surprising from ideas, but when we're going out to ask residents to invest in the to-be-built city center, they want to feel that we're planning ahead for the time that that structure needs to be either modeled or, you know, refurbished or rebuilt, unlike what we've done in the past to the buildings that we're in. So, and twenty percent of the most popular parcel tax tax dwellings with an acre, a half acre to an acre, would be twenty percent with the savings of a hundred fifty dollars. I think if you go to Chantilly, you spend that on, you know, on your wife and friends, so.
First, we, I think we're addressing this building fund issue because John brought it up. It's really a matter of the next item on the agenda, not this item on the agenda. And so I'll hold my comments on it until the next item on the agenda. I think it's a worthwhile thing to address. When we first discussed this, I don't recall if it was at the strategic session or at the special, at the study session, I felt like because we got a windfall of sales tax this year, that it would make sense for us to effectively rebate twenty percent of the parcel tax, which is about equal to that windfall sales tax, which I think we still don't exactly know where that came from. And I was, and we debated that and decided, no, we shouldn't do that, we should go for the hundred percent. And I fully agree that we have very substantial infrastructure projects on the agenda. These are infrastructure projects that have needed attention for many years. We have, for the first time, had three general fund budget surplus in excess, or very close to a million dollars since Prop thirteen passed. Maybe the first time in history, but definitely since Prop thirteen passed. We are in a blacker situation with respect to our general fund than we ever have been. And I think that's partially because of smart conservative policy setting by the council over the last several years and excellent management from our staff. And the increase in property tax values that have resulted in significantly greater property taxes over time. If we're not going to spend that surplus on capital improvement projects, because I think all of us don't want to grow the operating budget, then we should absolutely rebate the parcel taxes. I do, I am not interested in continuing to grow our excess reserves. We have an established fifteen percent, a twenty percent reserve, which is good conservative planning. And we have moved two point three million dollars and change from the general fund reserve to the capital improvement projects. And we still have five million dollars in our general fund reserve, all of which I intend to use on capital improvement projects. I, you know, of course, it doesn't make sense to look at that until we start to use what's in the capital improvement projects. But I agree, if we're not gonna use it, we should be rebating it. We haven't gotten the drainage master plan report in. And it, you know, is going to be very substantial, we all know that. We have gotten the bike and pedestrian path master plan in. It's an excellent master plan. It calls for very significant work in this town. And that is why we've established a bike and pedestrian committee to advise us on how to move forward on that master plan. I am absolutely committed to doing that. I think it's a great decision that we are going to implement, that we're in the middle of an engineering study on Middlefield Road right now. And the intent is to move forward on putting in place class one and class two bike paths on Middlefield Road. It is exactly the right thing to do. It's a very heavily used road by automobiles and by students. And we need to make that, and that's gonna be expensive. So I'm, I was convinced in this discussion that we not seek to rebate this money now, but we move forward and implement these plans. And I'm also, you know, we've also gotten the Holbrook Palmer Park master plan, which calls for a substantial amount of investment that has been neglected over many years. And I am committed to doing that. I also wanna be sensitive that we don't overwhelm both staff and those that enjoy the park by having too much construction going on at one time. And I think we are doing it in a reasonable paced way. I guess I personally feel like the implementation of those capital improvement projects can wait. But I wanna be, I am committed to them and I'm glad that we're moving forward with it. And that's a long-winded way of saying that I don't think we're being irresponsible with our funding allocations and decisions. While I'd be fine with the rebate because of this windfall, I think that the argument that we need to put both the windfall and the full parcel tax into the capital improvement projects, it is, you know, a perfectly reasonable decision that I can support. That's what the council decided, so I'm standing with that and supporting that. And, but I also think that if we don't actually move forward and implement these capital improvement projects, then, then I change my position.
Well, the parcel tax comes up for renewal next year in November for implementation, June twenty seventeen. So you have the decision at that time what to do. So, I mean, it's, it's a short window.
One year after that?
It's twenty seventeen.
Always an odd year, we went twenty thirteen.
Odd year, okay, you're right, it was twenty thirteen, that's when you were.
Right, it was twenty thirteen.
I knew there was an election year.
Oh, it was an unusual election year.
It was an unusual election year, okay.
Any other comment?
That's it.
Do I have a motion?
Have a vote.
So, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose?
I'm opposed to implementation of the full amount, not assessing some of the parcel tax.
Okay, let's move on to item nineteen. Does that move on?
I'll take that one. I thank the spare members of the council. You have before you the two thousand fifteen sixteen budget that the staff in the finance department worked very hard on. You've got a nice budget booklet there, covering you and it's online as well. It includes all the changes that you had suggested at the last study session. The budget study session includes, as the mayor mentioned, the two point three that goes into the CIP, includes the transfer of the five hundred and five into a capital facilities reserve fund. It includes the workers' comp allocation and it includes
O-CAP six hundred eighty?
The O-CAP contribution as well, bringing that five million dollars in the O-CAP trust. And then also attached to the staff report, as the council requested, is a list of memberships that the town, city council budget has in it. You have about seven or eight of those, total about thirteen thousand dollars a week maybe. The last three of which, staff, is a recommendation of a lesser funding amount. But since suggested that the council could not approve those if those are bounced, instead have those groups come back maybe in July or among what are available, make their request. And the council considered that amount as a, you know, budget amendment to those particular organizations at whatever level you so choose. So that concludes the staff presentation. You've already seen a bunch of PowerPoint slides and you've got, you've had the document before you for several meetings. So that concludes the staff report.
Question of clarification? Okay, is there any public comment on the budget?
Before a public comment, if I can just make a report out of planning commission.
Sure.
Planning commission did review the capital improvement program. They found that it was consistent with the general plan as required by state planning and zoning law. Thank you.
First off, Robert and George, thanks a lot. This, last year, we had a good session on moving forward and overtime and got this thing in good shape. And this year, actually surpassed that. I thought that we had the presentations and the work that you all have done and the time that we spent on it as a team, I think it went very, very well and I appreciate that. And it was, and it really is a substantially better document than it was last year. And so, thank you very much. I do support the city manager's recommendation that we, as a council, consider on these optional dues memberships, that we have them come in and make a presentation and then decide how much we want to give to them, understanding a little bit more of what they actually are going to provide and is there a direct benefit to Atherton? Or what is the benefit to the region so that we can understand that? So that would be, for me, the last three that were on the list, the other ones, including the hip housing and the heart, I think that those things, you know, I would say go along with staff recommendations, they fund those directly. But thank you very much for the report, it was a good report.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I just wanna say again, you mentioned it's a team effort. We have a great team here, starting from George all the way down to our individual department heads and the department. So it's a dueling process, a grueling one. But again, we have a lot of ambitious projects ahead and we're gonna use every bit of that money, guarantee you. So, thank you.
Just a comment about the membership and dues. I agree with the staff report that the last three, Joint Fund for Silicon Valley, Sustainable Silicon Valley, and San Diego County Jobs for Youth, should come in on annual presentations and tell us what they're doing, how it's benefiting our community at large. Although I do think that if you look at the actual amount of dues that are being requested, joint fund for Silicon Valley is like two hundred and fifty dollars a year.
They'd ask for a thousand?
They'd ask for a thousand. Well, I think that, yeah.
Do I have a bars presentation?
But, I mean, it's on the lower amount, it's like only, all three of them is about thirteen hundred dollars. And it's not that much, just to kind of stay in, as a contribution. So I would be inclined to fund them at the lower amount and have them look at this presentation.
As to that, it's really quite a small amount of money. Rob was following on some money here, but I like the idea of having them come in. And I feel like, to the extent we are spending truly discretionary funds that are coming from taxpayers and special obligation and that, like, you're, it works very wisely.
Yeah, I would have to act as a council member. Whitmer's comments as well as Mike's comments here. I think that, you know, we, none of us want more presentations, but it is nice to know what they do provide us. And seeing that there is some representation in Atherton, can be applicable to Atherton, it is often nice when we're spending the taxpayer's dollars, so, important.
I agree with that. I think that any of the non-compulsory contributions, we should ask them to come to make a presentation. And then we can make that decision. We could do a set aside in the budget, you know, a couple thousand dollars that we can use
Right.
towards that end.
So the budget would have to pull them up and not
Don't do anything.
Not pay them until they have a presentation.
Also, bills might want to make that. That's a good idea, having a reserved amount of
So we don't have to amend the budget, right? I mean, I, we don't have to spend it, I'd say, you know, add a thousand dollars, let's be, let's add it a generous amount. So we may have somebody come in at some point during the year.
So tell me about thirteen eight up to fifteen thousand, just to break that off.
Fifteen hundred? Oh, 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 add the whole thing, right.
About fifteen thousand, I think that I'm comfortable with that, I like all of it. And we make that call at the time. I think we should make the call after the presentation. We wanna, we wanna know they want us. And, I mean, we are representing the taxpayer dollars, I think it's
But that includes everybody, the whole fifteen thousand. And so we're gonna obviate ourselves, go to the LACO, CK, we get City Smart, get the housing. The housing comes and gets a presentation anyway all the time. So really, the only thing that we're talking about is, I mean, so are you saying set aside the fifteen thousand as a special fund for all of the other ones? So really, the only thing that we're talking about as, I mean, so are you saying set aside the fifteen thousand as a special fund for all of the other ones?
No, I'm suggesting that there's a total on the bottom there, thirteen eight fifty eight or something like that.
Right, yeah.
Change that to fifteen thousand, pay all the ones that are compulsory.
Pay all the ones in, okay.
The last three, however, break them in for their specific amounts.
I will decide if you announce that.
Something else that came up during the one-on-one conversations is, the Civic Center project has a lot of sustainability issues connected to it.
What's that?
I said something that came up during the one-on-one sessions is that the Civic Center project has a lot of sustainability issues connected to it. And joint venture Silk, Silk Valley-
Yeah.
Uh, and Sustainable San Antonio might have, uh, opportunities to help us with grant applications, you know, maybe they make those presentations and we say, hey, we're gonna give you a thousand dollars if you'll help us apply for grants. So it shows up.
We wouldn't know that unless they did a presentation.
I think, uh, believing that just a fifteen thousand's gonna make a tight choice.
Is that, is that a thousand or two, I don't care about that, we don't have to spend it. Let's make it seventeen five.
Seventeen five? Robert's crossing out number.
Cheap. Okay, uh, so, I, I, I just wanna make a statement about the five hundred and five building fund, because this is the right place. My understanding is this is part of the general reserve.
It's presently part of the general reserve, but it's general fund money that we just set aside for the building department's switch over. So if that's done, which it is, this rolls right back into the general fund as a, um, but the council can then, what the council directed was, instead of doing that, designate it as a capital facilities reserve fund to start that planning for the next building fifty years out.
There was some confusion in the community about whether this fund could then be used to help fund the civic center fund.
No.
Well, the five emails back and forth underscored that five times. Um, the bottom line is, of course it can, um, nobody ever suggested it, but what was suggested was what Carrie said earlier, this is good fiscal planning to try and put some seed money out there that, that keep this kind of problem that we're having now from happening. Yeah, I think it's been explained and I think that the council is very well aware and the staff's well aware that it's for an approved appropriate fund, so.
Yeah. And, and just to be clear, I'm still not convinced by that reason, I, I, in, in my view, um, you'd wait for the building to be built over fifty years, it wouldn't take that much money each year.
So what if, I'm just saying, I just said, I'm gonna throw a little, what if it was to replace the existing buildings that are here? These are, we'll just ship it instead of saying civic center building, these are civic center buildings, so the five hundred thousand dollars to replace the civic center buildings that are here.
I think, that's what Bill just said, we can't do that, we can't use it for the, we're about to build.
Because of the ballot measure.
We can't use any general fund money other than the, the building fund and the library fund to, because of the initiative that's passed by the board.
So if we had had that, uh, general reserve going down, say, beginning like in two thousand, you know, before the ballot measure? And there was, you know, like the library owner funds, you know, set aside, then we could do that, well, but maybe not, even though, but though, yes, we can, because we've got the building.
Oh, that was taken out of the general fund, it wasn't taken out of the building.
It, it doesn't matter.
Okay, it doesn't matter, let's go on.
So, I, I think if there is confusion in the public about what we're doing, there's no reason to create confusion. I, we can put the five hundred and five thousand into the general fund reserve and once the building's built, we can put, you know, any portion of that general fund reserve into a building fund. We, we don't have to start with the five hundred and five now, we could, we could start it once the building's built at, you know, some larger amount.
But you wanna spend on capital improvement projects.
That's, well, that's where I was going, here, we're just talking about here and there.
I mean, I, that's, the way I look at the general fund reserve right now is it's available to capital improvement projects.
Right.
I put the whole thing into the capital improvement projects fund, but we're not gonna use it, so.
Yeah, no, because we have, it's just physical constraints.
We've had other money there and we decided to bring it down to five million, we could've brought it down lower.
Yeah.
Probably here, really bad.
General fund, what we, what we talked about.
Who said that?
What happened, because we wanted to be able to tell them, we're gonna, we're gonna make sure that, you know, you, you keep the building out there. And it was discussed that if not, if we're gonna do that, then it should be in perhaps a restricted fund. Then we were in discussion and said, no, uh, we don't wanna put it in a restricted fund, but everybody's gonna know that we're not gonna touch it and that's what we're trying to do. So, you know, and, and so now we're back to, we're making it move around anyway, so I, I, I'm confused really, because we've, we're kinda going in a circle.
Well, I, then, we're, we're just trying to avoid the circle. I think that responsible planning in any project is we're dog-herding funds for particular projects. If we have thirty million dollars in channel projects, we obviously are, the probability that we're ever going to be able to write a check for thirty million dollars is not gonna happen. So the reality is, we should be planning for those funds for the channel project, the funds for replacement of the civic center prior to us having to expend those funds. We should say, hey, we've been responsibly setting monies aside and that capital improvement project that we've now gotten a settlement on is thirty million, we saved up fifteen million. Let's see, so it's kind of a, a balance, and the civic center project, obviously them being, building a new center today, would say that hopefully we don't replace a building for fifty years. So therefore, what monies that we set aside for fifty years worth of replacement, I think that to the taxpayer, I think if we've asked taxpayers out there, why are you asking me for my, don't you have that money? Well, if I plan on buying a new house, I'm either getting a loan or I've got the money. And if I haven't saved, I'm probably getting a loan, and we're just not in the option of getting a loan. So the reality is taxpayers would say, hey, you're a lot more responsible, because you've actually saved for your future civic center.
In, uh, the twenty sixteen seventeen budget, uh, you, the civic center project should have a shovel underground. So during that fiscal budget, that project becomes an asset to the town and staff will be recommending as part of that budget that we create a depreciation fund to save for the replacement of that facility. This is just a one-year advance on that, is all this is.
So, against, you're depreciating against what is a shovel underground, that's an unusual strategy.
Well, we already have an asset dollar figure of what that construction project is gonna be, is gonna cost, so we'll know what that construction dollar is.
But, you know, we-
We'll let the construction contract operate.
But you complete something, to your point, you complete something before you capitalize it and then you start your depreciation on it. So, you know, the project needs to be completed, you know, to your point.
That's, that's wrong.
So, so two years after.
By the way, I completely support the idea of building a, a, you know, a pretty reserve, I completely, I think that's exactly the right way to go. I just feel like we have real infrastructure demands now and, and this is money that we're not gonna be spending for fifty-five years if all goes well.
And you, you were writing that we delay this until after the buildings.
Until, until it's built, and, and I'd be perfectly happy to make the representation anytime, but I would at least support building a pretty reserve, but there wasn't, there wasn't funding at the time.
But I think that the way that we have our hands tied related to no tax, tax funds are going into this project, if our little contribution is we're already starting to set aside for a future project and that's just, you know, one little thing that we could do to hopefully tell people that we're being responsible, that in fifty years, we should have saved up enough money to replace their investment. These ten people are giving us the money to build a center that frankly, in my opinion, we should already have saved. So, I, I'm, I'm still in favor of leaving it how it is and, uh, in one year changing into a dedicated fund, depreciate the fund for replacement of the facility while we've got that shovel underground. We're just trying to be responsible and so that the message out there to the people that we're taking, giving very generous contributions, that by the way, we are being responsible, we're gonna be responsible and you're gonna be able to see us replace your building in fifty years. That's just me. So, are you looking for a motion to approve or are we done with this discussion?
I'm, I'm working to approve the budget. I'd like to approve the two thousand fifteen sixteen budget, would you amend on the, on the, uh, for the, uh, donations, contributions, uh, there's the, uh, the council fund.
Yeah, that's a motion.
Yeah.
I'll second it. Mike seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, let's move on to item, I think we have fifty minutes.
Uh, item twenty is a formality, it's the gas limit. It's an adoption of a resolution setting where we need appropriations limit based upon state law for fiscal year fifteen sixteen at eleven million seven hundred fifty thousand four hundred sixty seven.
Uh, any question or clarification? There are none, is there any public comment? There are none, any comments from the council? I have a motion.
Salute.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, moving on to item twenty-one, the year contract extension for MCE. Mike?
Um, yes, staff fully doesn't have any, uh, more than what's in your report, I do wanna make, uh, one clarification, I think everyone knows this, but, uh, just a clarification on how the recommendation is written, that the recommendation is to authorize a three-year extension to the MCE contract. And, uh, the negotiated cost, the negotiated not to exceed cost for the first year of that contract extension is five hundred and twenty-seven thousand zero fifty-two. Uh, so I just wanted to just read that into the record.
Was, was there negotiated terms with respect to the cost for the second, third year, or is that to be determined?
Well, they, Steve, we have two Steves back there that can address it, but, but it's pretty much gonna be staying constant, but there are some exceptions based upon what happens with prevailing wage and those sorts of things. Um, and we do have Steve Tyler here, your public work superintendent, as well as Steve Lowry, who's a vice president with MCE Corporation, is here this evening to answer council questions.
When we first brought this up, I think it was at a study session, if you may not have done, but when we first brought up, can we guys feel should be extended and things like that? Uh, I personally did my, yeah, I, these guys have done a great job and, and all that. Uh, I did bring up, um, that, uh, we should consider putting something in with regards to a price review annually or a benchmark price review, okay? Uh, and ask the, the MCE participate, if not, uh, prepare that for our review and make sure that we can tell people that we're extending this, et cetera. Uh, year on year, we're getting good rates, um, and, and, um, so we can avoid the going out for a budget and, uh, or proposals. And I, I don't see that in here, I think that there was a discussion that said that it was going to be done, but I, uh, but I didn't see that in here. So, did that get in, was there a discussion about it, or what was the situation?
Councilman Whitmer, I, I, I don't recall, I, I, I went over those notes, did, do you recall that?
I do recall that, uh-
Next one?
I, that did make it into the extension.
Let me explain that, though, this is a three-year contract.
I'm sure.
If, if you, what you're probably taking three one-year contracts, there's the distinction. You wanna give them a three-year contract, but they're saying the base amount is fixed, there's a slight amount they can't estimate in advance, up to thirteen percent of their contract, where they may have to pay prevailing wages and if prevailing wages go up, they shouldn't have to absorb that out of their pocket, that should be, they should be allowed to, to change it. That will come back in, in the budget every year, that part of the budget will come back, but what, that comeback is the contract, so all of the terms and provisions, the base terms, will have been constant, that's the part that's constant.
Add a general, because there shouldn't have been a price review at the end, towards the end of the contract, so we know whether or not we need to prepare an RFP six months in advance.
From a year in advance.
Not unless somebody does a benchmark or goes out to bid. How, how a year in advance? How, you know, a year in advance if you're, if we wanna exercise the guys. I mean, that's, that's, that's the thing, I mean, that's, that's the reason that these type of contracts, you put in benchmark or price review and we ask the, and normally you would ask the, you know, the, the contractor actually to participate with, looking at the rates that other jurisdictions are using or other contracts they have and just comparing and you make sure that we can feel good about, this is a good deal for us. That's all, I, you know, and since we did bring it up, I kinda forgot it'd be in here, but the, I understand it got dropped out, but, uh, I mean, that's, that's the reason you do it. You know, and even in three-year contracts or five-year contracts, you can put a benchmarking clause in there and says every year you, you do look at the prices and if they're not, then, then you, you negotiate how to get the price down to that level. I mean, there are, I, I've personally, you know, Bill, I've personally signed ten-year contracts that's got annual benchmarking and price reviews. You know, and there are different clauses that, that, that affect them, but it doesn't matter, I mean, it's not in here, so it doesn't-
No, I appreciate that, I've been doing this for thirty-five years and I've never seen one of those. So, not that they don't exist and not that we couldn't come up with something else, what they came up with, I thought was as close to that as we can get and still follow California's competition requirement. And that is, here's the base contract, there may be some revisions needed on an annual basis and they will come to us with those. And the reason you know a year in advance is because they will come just like this way in the budget, prospectively saying what they need next year. Not six months next year, and hopefully that'll be enough that we can plan and project from, because there is gonna be some flexibility. We often remember, put that ten percent contingency in public contracts because we don't know, it's kind of the same thing here, they don't know, so they've come to us and said, look, good faith, we don't know what the state's going to do. The state, the state does very strange things sometimes with their end of the financing and how can we hold somebody back?
So, so the issue that staff went back with was not negotiating a new contract, we're just negotiating an extension to the existing contract. And Steve's task was to go out and, you know, craft up some measures for performance and talk about areas of change and improvement, uh, and bring those back. And what he brought back was, the only thing that we don't have control over is the, uh, prevailing wage stuff, but the whole contract overall cost is going down by two point five three percent and there's areas of the contract where that has an impact, uh, but we didn't put in the benchmarking thing, because that would have necessitated a full change of the contract, which is, as the attorney explained, can't do. Uh, but we will look at it every year, it's a three-year extension, and as, as you suggested, at two years in, we come back to you just like we did this time and say, do you want to go up for an RFP? Or do you want to, uh, talk about an extension again, that's kind of what we'll do the last time.
Two, two thoughts on that, when we talked about it, um, this is so far down the road now, it doesn't matter to me next time, but I, I at least had the, the opinion and thought, we all did, that, that we were going for an RFP this time, but the recognition was putting out there a long way and the assumption was that we'd be going for an RFP to see what competition would bring next time.
Next time.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Uh, second thing, as I said, I recall there's a pretty short termination clause in this, is that correct? A thirty day out with thirty days?
I believe it's sixty.
Sixty, is it sixty days?
Since the contract is in front of us, all we have is an extension.
Sixty, sixty.
It's still a pretty short termination clause, so, you know, we're not powerless in this, I just wanted to stress that.
And, and the, the costs that MCE can control, which is their people, their fleet, you know, everything except prevailing wage, um, is controllable. In fact, if you'll notice on, on the one prevailing wage sheet I did give you, you'll notice that a couple of prevailing wages actually did go down. If that was to happen, there, there's a chance that this contract could actually drop a little bit also, it's not always gonna be up necessarily. It doesn't happen too often, but two of the main six prevailing wage units that they use in this town, uh, for certain types of work that they do, did go down last time, so. And once again, you're seeing, you know, a little bit of a decrease for that in our overall, um, budget. And, and it was a-
I'll just say, you know, I think they're doing a great job, I'm, I'm very, very happy, um, you know, and it's really great to have them, um, on board and know the town now. Um, for two point nine three percent reduction, I mean, yeah, I think that's great and, um, yeah, so I'm on board, I think that we're doing a good thing here and not renegotiating the entire contract, it's saving money on the ground.
We are learning to work well together, uh, they, they perform a, a really good service for us and just by working with us and seeing our needs the last number of years, they've really been able to sharpen their pencil and, you know, we hit these negotiations pretty hard and, and, you know, they came out like this. You know, we talked about doing even more concessions than they're currently doing now, such as the water meter concessions and the, uh, response time concessions for potholes and, and things like that. But, you know, the, the major concession being, hey, we're even getting, we're getting, we're keeping everything we've got-
Um, but, you know, the, the major concession being, hey, we're even getting a, we're getting, we're keeping everything we've got and getting a reduction in wage rates, and getting the employees, the retention things that we ask for. Excuse me?
Five thousand. We reduced, I mean, we, we, uh, Murdoch.
Yes.
We reduced Murdoch.
Yeah.
Through the check. So, more. I just, yeah, I just wanna echo what the Vice Mayor just said, and, you know, I was very apprehensive in, in contract employees, and feeling like we would lack the personal contact that residents in Atherton, uh, would be expecting from employees in the town. And I will tell you, miss, I mean, Mike and other MCE employees that we would in fact miss, so the people that we do have have become our family members like they were employees truly here all the time. So, you know, kudos to MCE for having, you know, the people that we do have, and, you know, seeing the contract and having the ability to look at it every year. I mean, again, we lost some of the people that we'd have, we'd feel it just like we'd lose any employee, that they're very dedicated individuals, so, uh, I applaud the mayor's statement.
Well, on behalf of MCE, I thank you for those comments. Uh, we do strive to have our employees get very integrated into all the communities that they work in and feel like they're part of it, and that they own it.
Yep.
Uh, many of our employees in some of our communities are residents.
Yep.
And users of those facilities when they're not working on them. And so, uh, we thank them so hard, we have thirty.
None at Atherton.
Yeah. Thank you, we are very grateful. Okay, I'll make it.
Yeah, so, my only other comment on this is that, uh, and I know we ask, we, we do additional tasks, and we ask, for example, in the park, we put extra money into the park, and they were gracious enough to have come up with people for us, so. But there are other tasks that get out there that, uh, y'all sign up for, uh, and, and I guess as we sign up for these deals, hopefully that, um, we get them done in a timely manner, and it may involve bringing in additional people that, that are not here on the payroll, and I think in some cases, that's been a little bit lacking, and so hopefully, as we move forward and as we add, do these add-ons, which is good for you as well as for us, because we'd like to keep it all in the family, so to speak. And, and y'all are doing, you know, the community, et cetera, but, uh, there need to be actioned in, in a timely manner, because we pass these things like painting, uh, some of our pillars, or doing trimming and tagging trees, and, and the residents then say, well, when are you gonna do mine? And, and it's like, well, you don't have enough people, and you're getting to it when you get to it, and, and that's really inappropriate. So we need to, as we add tasks to it, hopefully we will add some resources to execute that task on time. Uh, and that's, but other than that, the guys are doing a good job, especially in the park.
And, and I know there was a question in the park, uh, you know, with the reduction of, of Ed, and also, there's the question of next year's spending, which is, uh, a lot of capital projects going to completing a bunch of the park projects that were put, put forth. Now, I know, I don't know how we're gonna accomplish those tasks, uh, whether they will go out to bid, or we will negotiate something with MCE for, yeah, MCE came up with the projects, we have task lists for every one of them, they're now capitalized as part of the, uh, capital improvement program for, for park spending. But, you know, one of the things that, I was speaking with Steve, uh, before this meeting, was, you know, when we go about doing those projects, whoever ends up doing them, yeah, we're, we're gonna have to bring in extra forces, those aren't gonna be by, done by the guys that are here. All that continues on while those extra forces come in. And, and talking about the loss of Ed Murdoch, you know, something that's concerned, I know the Park and Rec Committee, and as well as myself, and I know you, uh, the mayor and I have talked about it a number of times. You know, Ed gave us a lot of really good, uh, you know, that whole, uh, park irrigation inventory he did, came up with a bunch of projects. He's still here overseeing a lot of things that are going on, but, you know, a lot of that reduction that you're seeing in the park right now is his lack of hours. And, you know, speaking with Steve about it, the fact of the matter is, for the next couple of years, uh, that's work that we really don't need anymore. We need more of the oversight, but, you know, we're gonna accomplish all that stuff that he came up with now, and maybe in a, a year or two down the road, we'll need to get somebody like him again, and, and kind of do the overview, but right now, it's a, it's a good money-saving, and like you said, we've got a lot of work to do in that park, and a lot of it's been generated by his oversight and knowledge, and we can follow that up on, there, there is a big part of that park reduction.
I don't know, catch, catch me out, what happened to Ed Murdoch?
He retired again.
He retired.
He's continuing, he's continuing twelve hours.
He's given us twelve hours a month after.
Twelve hours a week, and there's a significant savings we brought in and felt for time.
You'll see him out in the park, he's actually doing the arboretum science on the trees right now.
Salute.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Uh, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, bless Steve, I guess. You're back. It's up to you, Mike.
Okay, uh, so next item, item number twenty-two, um, again, the, the key points of this item is that uh, this ordinance fulfills new state law requiring expedited building permits for rooftop solar systems, uh, below Ken, ten KV. Uh, the town already has an expedited permit process which meets these state mandated requirements of issuing a permit within three days, so we're already doing that. Uh, so although the town already operationally complies with state law, this ordinance was adds chapter fifteen point six to the Atherton Municipal Code, fulfills the ordinance adoption requirement mandated, mandated by state law. Uh, the purpose of this evening is to introduce by title and way future reading of the ordinance, and to conduct a public hearing. Uh, this ordinance will be scheduled for adoption at July fifteenth, city council meeting, and the ordinance will then become effective thirty days later.
Questions?
Not a public hearing, just public meetings.
Oh, public meeting. Sorry.
I think this is great, I mean, I think that from the Environmental Programs Committee, years ago, we really pushed for, um, you know, more teeth in our ordinances, and, um, we were kind of pushed back, saying, wait until, um, we hear what the state's gonna do, kind of, you know, um, shake things down. But we have, um, really, I think, tried to, um, be more aggressive on the solar installation, um, promoting that on expedite. So, I mean, I think this just gratifies it, I think it's a good thing.
This, this, my, my understanding is that this just implements what's required by state law.
Right.
Well, you don't want to see that.
I would like to a- ask staff to look at, uh, the possibility of including during this or a, a related ordinance, a requirement that all the construction involved, even. And I know that there's several cities in California, including Tiburon, and Tiburon, Lancaster, or, yeah, several of them. I'm not certain we wanna do that, but I think we should.
Can't do that in this.
Okay, here.
But can I ask staff to look at that?
Well. You can theoretically, no, but, but I don't think, I think you're getting.
You're always known to do that.
But part, part, okay, so where it comes up is that part of the staff report on this identifies that the, uh, fee structure for a red for, um, approving a multi, multi-optic system is five hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents, and I think that we should review reducing that. In order to, right? Can we also track this, and see how many people are actually utilizing and actually installing? Because.
That would be a nice relative.
One, and, and on, over the last couple of years, just averaged about twenty-two, um, permits per year.
Oh, that's, it's pretty good. It's ten percent.
Not yet, I'm just, uh, twenty-two is not. Twenty-two of.
Hundred percent.
Which is.
It's okay.
Have a, have a. Okay, any other comments?
I just, I, I do, I was like, on this, which simply, I agree with the policy, you're in the substance, would know that the state mandates are, are, we have no choice in this, and I just know that. You know, it's funded mandate coming from the state.
But we're doing it anyways, we can do it.
And the substance, I agree.
I'll make the motion.
Second, a motion to add chapter fifteen sixteen to the Atherton Municipal Code relating to the expedited permitting procedure for small residential and top solar systems.
Move first reading.
And wait for the first reading.
Wait for the first reading.
Second?
Second.
On the paper?
Aye.
Aye.
And staff's subject to direction is to come back at a future meeting with an analysis of fee structure, possibly reducing that fee, and a discussion for the council of, uh, the possibility of mandating solar installation of construction.
We have a discussion on it. Correct, a discussion.
Correct, because there are some, lots of trees around Atherton that, that, that's obnoxious.
Yeah. So I had them come out and, and I had my customer, first building it, and said, they said, no, you're.
Just a disclaimer, correct.
Yeah, come back to me, it's like.
At least two of us in the council, that's a, that's a comment. I had the same issue. I can do it, because.
So the majority of town.
I'd like to make the motion to adjourn.